And before we get started, I just wanted to again thank, take another opportunity to recognize and to thank the close to or probably more than now 100 staff members who were a part of helping the district to craft this draft reopening plan. And also want to thank our parents for their patience and understanding as well, as well as providing us with valuable feedback through surveys, focus groups, emails, let's talk messages. You name it, we're getting that feedback from, from all. Next slide, Michael. So just a quick recap, on July 9th, the administrative team and I shared with the board and our community about the goals, our consideration and challenges for reopening school in fall of 2020. We acknowledged at that time and recognized the stress and emotional toll that the global pandemic of COVID-19 has had on our students, our staff, our families, on all of us. And we also acknowledge our community's desire to get our students back on site. But we also know that the pandemic is not over. So as we plan to return in August, I stated to the community and board that we must remain agile and ever ready to shift our instructional delivery models seamlessly between virtual and in-person instruction based on the current status of COVID-19 and Restore Illinois Plan in our region. Next slide, Michael. So after carefully reviewing the state's Phase 4 guidance for schools, next slide, Michael, and analyzing the physical conditions of our schools, next slide, Michael, as well as the financial and staffing conditions in District 97. The current plan is for District 97 to start the year in a hybrid blended model of learning. We believe that this plan will best provide our students with an educational experience that's equitable, inclusive, and focused on the whole child. Social distancing in this plan is possible. As well, we would, if needed, be able to really quickly move to a remote-only learning environment where our students and staff will be prepared to continue the delivery of rigorous engaging learning opportunities. As well, the plan, next slide, Michael. The plan was guided by three key objectives. Again, first and foremost, health and safety of our students and staff is our number one priority. Wanting to provide consistently across the days and weeks and months, high-quality learning experiences for our students. And last but certainly not least, again, just the equity imperative. Our district's equity policy continues to be at the foundation of our work, and we are committed to applying our equity lens to every decision we make in the coming months. Next slide. It is really important, however, that I note that these plans for fall 2020 are highly dependent on the current status of COVID-19 and Restore Illinois Plan. As we further refine this hybrid model, we are also working to develop a more robust remote learning plan for all of our students. I have asked members of the Learning Models Subcommittee to answer a few of the questions that were submitted to us by the Board of Education following our special board meeting on July 9th. So I'd like to now introduce Dr. Ebony Lofton, our Chief Academic and Accountability Officer, as well as Mr. Michael Aaronstor, our Senior Director of Technology, who will answer questions regarding remote learning.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. So next slide. So kind of when we were forced to close quickly in March of last, earlier this year, as a result of the pandemic, our teachers worked really quickly and decisively to pivot to this new environment. So this shift was really based on the remote learning guidance here by ISB, when there's still a lot to learn about the impact of the pandemic on student learning. So as we began to prepare for the fall, what we have to hope to do is just really capture the stakeholder voice and hear from our parents, our teachers, and students, and then use that feedback that we shared in an earlier meeting to kind of inform what were our next steps for the fall planning. So as a result of the examination of that data, we use our summer program experience to continue to kind of fine-tune a blend of both asynchronous and synchronous learning to ensure that we were engaging students during that time. And this will actually continue as we launch our two-week virtual step-up program next week to over 500 students in the district. So based on what we've learned, and now that we've had an opportunity to kind of share our thinking with our teachers, related service providers, and principals, we're proposing a schedule that delivers core instruction, so English Language Arts and Mathematics for elementary schools, and then Language and Literature, Mathematics, Science, and Individuals and Societies courses for middle schools on days when students are onsite in this hybrid model. And we would also leverage Wednesdays to meet the weekly minutes that we've previously dedicated to those subject areas. On the days that students are engaged in remote learning, we would be offering our elective and specials synchronously and remotely. We can go to the next slide. So that answers the first question, and then I'll turn it to Michael for a discussion of the new learning platforms.
Yeah, thank you, Ebony. So over, I guess in the process, turning back a few years ago, we've had a number of different learning platforms. Middle School has adopted the Canvas platform for a number of years. At the elementary, there's been a few different LMS or tools that have been used as primary. End of the spring, we had focused our efforts with K2, looking at using CSO, and then 3, 4, 5, using Google Classroom, and Canvas in the middle school. So those will be the platforms that we'll be moving forward with in the fall as well at those different grade bands, continuing to collaborate and gather feedback from our staff, students, and families to continue to see if those are meeting all of those needs that we want, but really be able to have those, so whether it's onsite or offsite, the materials for the class and then what's going on there would be using those tools again. So we will have information to provide. And again, there are tools that we used in the spring, but getting teachers and families and students more familiar with those in the fall will help to do that and streamline that. Along with that, I know there's a lot of conversation, and we were able to deploy about 250 devices to our K2 students that did not have them at home or did not have regular access to them in the spring. However, working with our team and big thanks to Felicia and working through with the CARES and the Business Department CARES dollars, but also some of our grants, we're able to purchase with very minimal district dollars to purchase the devices, additional devices for our K2 students. So in the fall, we'll be able to roll out one-to-one for K2 with a large number of the devices we currently have, but then a purchase of additional iPads for our K2 students. So that will, all the applications in these learning platforms will be installed on them for that consistency for our students. So a great opportunity to continue that continuity of resources for all of our kids. And we will continue to leverage Internet for All program so we ensure our kids not only have the devices, but they also have the internet, whether they're at school or at home.
So the next question is kind of ask about summer and what we learned around success that we were able to garner and how to replicate that in the fall. So I want to first thank our amazing summer learning teams, our summer program teachers, our related service providers, and then obviously Faith Cole, Dr. Torni Lawrence, and Donna Middleton, as well as all of our coordinators. And so I think I kind of outlined what the basis for our delivery was, is really kind of ensuring that we had those opportunities for students to engage in small group instruction synchronously, to continue to have an intervention support that they needed, to continue our enrichment supports that they needed face-to-face with a teacher, and also to continue to create community amongst each other. So I think those were the main things that we saw as successful from that lens. And so those are things that we will continue to bring forth as we have remote learning in those two days that we have that with our elective and specialist teachers, and we'll continue to support them and that. So in terms of kind of where we were with summer and how we'd like to kind of use those lessons, that kind of is where we are and how we like to move forward. In terms of bringing someone from summer along, we typically do kind of a recap, and so we'll keep that schedule and make sure that we provide kind of an update on what we saw in terms of growth, and we'd like to do that once we actually finish all of our summer programming, just so we're able to have a complete package of what has happened and what the progress of our students looks like.
And for the last question, I think Ebony has hit on this a number of times too, of it'll be a combination of both synchronous, asynchronous, depending on whether, which day of the week. Again, some of the asynchronous stuff might be more on that Wednesday when everybody's remote and in combination with resources of things that are happening. But the majority, as she talked about, if students are onsite, they are in that face-to-face instruction that's happening with teachers, meeting those minutes in those areas. And then when they are on their remote time, again, most of that will be synchronous time for their specials or elective areas that are happening. And again, to go with that, the platforms that will be used, Zoom will be the main platform. We do have, Google Meet is available as well, but we do have the Zoom platform for our staff to be able to deliver that with the different paid features that we have to engage the students in a variety of different ways with the Zoom tool, so.
Thank you, Ebony and Michael. During the special board meeting on July 9th, several of the board members remarked that childcare was a key or a linchpin for the recommended hybrid blended approach. So we've have a few questions that we wanted to respond to that we've received from the board. But first, I'm going to ask our Director of Communications, Amanda Siegfried, if she can provide, please, highlight from the recent family survey. Amanda?
Thanks, Dr. Kelly. So this is just to share in case anyone wasn't present or didn't view our recap. And Michael, I don't know if you want to... Thank you. So in our family survey that we sent out a couple of weeks ago now, we asked several questions about the childcare needs of our families to try to get a preliminary idea, knowing it would be a big challenge, but just trying to get some estimates. Here you'll see that about 47.1% of families who responded indicated that they would need some level of childcare this fall. And then about half of the parents who responded also indicated that their work situation and the cost of childcare would be challenging. So I think Dr. Kelly is going to...
Thanks, Amanda. So on the next slide, you'll see some of the questions that were provided to us by the board. So I'm going to respond to the question. So question one, what does the district mean when it says childcare? And what are our objectives? Based on what you heard from Ebony and Michael, we know that when students are not on-site, when they are receiving their instructional delivery remotely, they will still be, they will still have a need to attend those classes even though they are remote. So in terms of, in terms of what we mean by childcare, we know that many of our students, I'm sorry, many of our families as well as our staff members will need to have that resource. And we have been working with our local partners. We actually just began today with, with a meeting to discuss how we might come up with innovative solutions. But our students will need to have the ability to report virtually for their classes. Their special or elective classes will be held asynchronously on these remote learning days. As well, they will have to have the ability to complete assignments that is based on their schedule for, for the days that they will be doing their work remotely. Thus, the childcare that we're seeking would be a partnership, obviously, between the family and that provider. But ideally, we would be looking to provide a structure for our students so that they're able to attend their remote classes, eat their lunch, and complete their assignments. So that's primarily when we say childcare, we are looking for opportunities for students in a safe space where they are still able to attend their classes, but they will be attending their classes remotely. The second question says, is there a space for childcare to take place on school grounds? Unfortunately, a part of the hybrid or the blended model is intended to reduce the density of the student population in our buildings. So during the school day, the, the aftercare, I'm sorry, the wraparound services or the childcare would not be able to take place on District 97 school buildings. However, after-school, aftercare would be available for our providers. The only caveat being is that the aftercare, because we're trying to avoid the co-mingling of that space, the aftercare will be provided on our sites to those students that are on-site for those days. The third question, when is the childcare survey going out? We want to prioritize first getting the cohorts of students out to our families as soon as possible. By getting that into our families' hands, we feel that our families will be able to identify exactly what their childcare needs are. So our first priority is working on getting the cohort list developed as well as communicated to our families, and then we will be jointly developing a childcare survey with the partners. The fourth question is, when are we going to bring all of the childcare partners together in one room to build one comprehensive childcare plan and engage with the community around us? Well, this has already started. Today was the first day that we were in the same physical space with many of the partners. We recognized that we did not include all of the partners, but one of our next steps from today's meeting was getting a list of who all the partners are so that we can, again, come together in one room. And then the final question is, who are the partners who are going to work with us on childcare? Are they involved in the planning process? So yes, they definitely will be involved in the planning process. I'm not 100% sure of all of the partners, but I will say those that we have been in contact with so far. And this is not the entire list. That list is still growing, but so far, there have been the Park District, OPEF, Hepsaba, and also the collaboration of Early Childhood. So again, that list, we know, is not inclusive, and we want to ensure that we have everyone around the table so that when our families let us know, and also our staff members let us know that childcare is an issue for them, we would be able to provide them with resources of innovative solutions. So next slide, I'm going to turn it back over to Amanda just to give a quick update on some of the deliverables that were outlined at the July 9th board meeting, special board meeting.
Yeah, so I just wanted to share a few updates on some of the next steps that we shared out last Thursday. Following the meeting, the Communications Department sent an email to all staff and to all families that included a recording of that meeting, plus the slide deck and the summaries of our family and staff surveys. This meeting tonight is also being recorded and will be shared in a similar fashion. We've also started a comprehensive FAQ document based on messages we've received from families and staff, and we are planning to hold a series of virtual Q&amp;A sessions with staff and families to address some of the common questions and concerns that have emerged. And we've also created a brief video just to recap sort of the high-level view of our plans. That's going to be posted within the next, hopefully, tonight, and we'll share that out with the FAQ this week for families. And then finally, our planning team will be working through the specific details of our plans over the next few weeks, and we are committed to sharing updates weekly with our staff and families and keeping them informed about all of the moving parts of our reopening plan. I think that's it. So I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Kelly.
Yes, so I think one of the questions that has come up, and I don't know if Felicia Starks-Turner or you, Amanda, want to chat about the, the, the survey regarding the remote-only option for, for students, because I did see that question that came up as well.
I could speak to that. So we are, we have already drafted the survey for a remote-only option. We are kind of in the beginning stages of planning that out, so we don't have a lot of details to share, but we are going to be sharing out that survey to determine exactly how many families are going to be interested in that, that method of instruction for their students for the first trimester. I think we are hoping to get that out as soon as possible, like in the next few days. So we're just trying to finalize that. So I would say to families, keep an eye on your emails, and we'll share it out also via all of our normal channels, social media, website, all of that.
And then for staff, Gina Herman, if you're there, if you could speak to, because we know at Phase 4 that the onsite for students and staff that have compromised medical situations that, that we would need to provide accommodations. So Gina, if you could just speak very briefly to that.
So we have, we have staff members who are self-identifying and have some, will be in need of accommodations if we go back to school. So we are gathering that information on an ongoing basis as well.
So next slide, Michael. That really concludes our update. So Jung, I'm going to turn the floor over to you if you want to open up to questions from the board.
Sure. If people don't mind if I start with one. I, I know we had talked on Thursday about opening the four-day option for students with, or prioritizing students with IEPs 504s and English Language Learners for the four days. Can you talk a little bit about how that will work for them? If we're talking about having core content areas on the two onsite days for the majority of students, how those four days might look for them?
Yep, we'll do that. And Ebony, before you answer that question, I do want to point out that if a family member feels uncomfortable because, again, of an underlying condition, you know, regarding COVID-19, we are prioritizing the students, but we're not like requiring them to be there for, you know, on-site learning. So I just wanted to clarify that because I know that that came up as a concern after our July 9th meeting. So Ebony, are you able to answer that question?
So Donna Middleton and I and Tracy Ham are kind of working through, it's a case-by-case basis, based on what folks are sharing with us. But we want to provide a couple of different options that we'll be sharing out with parents fairly soon so that they have kind of more information around what that four-day option might look like. So that is to be forthcoming. For students who are in what we'd normally be called self-contained classrooms, and we can say that we would have a continuous kind of learning because those classrooms are just by design under the threshold in terms of allowing six feet of physical distancing. But there's more information to come.
Would some other board members like to ask a few questions?
Yes, I have a question. So from the feedback that we've received so far, I think there's absolutely for 100% remote learning. So I just wanted to know what's the threshold for, I mean, I know we're getting a survey, but sometimes those, the results might not be accurate of what the actual need is if everyone might get an information. So I just wanted to know this for that planning. Are you already planning and then will we give some information? Or just kind of get a better understanding of like how you will determine if there will be 100% 100% remote learning options based on here.
So we will review, there, there are a couple of things. There are COVID-19 metric data for our region, but there's, you know, always the possibility, not saying that this will happen, but there's always the possibility that we will also get direction from the Superintendent of Department of, the Board of Ed in Illinois, or even our governor. And some, some of that might be not just based on the COVID data, but some of it also might be based on the availability of PPE and other situations of that nature. So I think by our planning for the hybrid blended approach, we're really building that robust remote learning plan that we would be able to, like, really move, move toward that. All of our professional learning for staff, a lot of the, the planning that we're doing is really attempting to make sure that that's robust in the case that we do need to move to that. And of course, we would communicate that if that's, if that's the case. So we're continuing to watch every day the information that comes out from the state. We have conversations with the village on a weekly basis. We are in contact with the Director of Public Health here. So we definitely are monitoring the situation and keeping those three priorities in mind, but the number one priority is around the health and the safety, not just of our students and families, but of our staff as well.
And just, thank you for that. Just to follow up, well, do you know when we have a deadline about when we might be able to let parents know if there's going to be a full remote option? I've seen a lot of discussion about transferring and homeschooling, so I'm sure parents would like to know when they can be able to make that decision. And then the same with, do you know when you expect to have the cohort list? What's your anticipation?
So for the first answer, the survey that Amanda shared previously, I believe that's, we're really trying to get that out by Monday. So I would say by the end of July, that parents will have the opportunity to say that, I don't really feel comfortable right now. I would prefer for my child to have the remote only. So that should be going out fairly shortly. And Amanda and Felicia, please correct me if I'm wrong. Regarding the cohort list, that's ASAP priority. Our principals are planning to work on that. So I would imagine that that communication would be available within the next couple of weeks.
So end of July?
I would imagine the end of July.
Can I follow up on that cohort question? In the, in the past, I know we haven't really shared, for privacy reasons, we haven't shared that information until the first day of school. So are we going to, when we share it, are we telling all parents that we're going to share their phone numbers, their contact information, kind of all of it at once? Are the teachers going to coordinate it?
It's, it's, we're providing information to parents so that they know if their child is in Cohort A, which is a Monday, Tuesday schedule, or Cohort B, which is so that they can make plans for childcare.
Okay, and what about going a step further and providing classroom lists early? Because I think there's a lot of conversation about setting up like study groups and setting up opportunities for you to find out who's in your class to form these kind of pods. And we all know each teacher, even though we are going to set standards, they, they do things differently and have different work. Is it, is it possible to go beyond the cohorts and share classroom lists?
I'm not prepared to answer that question this evening, but we do have it on the recording. So we'll follow up and get that response back.
Okay, thanks.
Was that, who was that, Gavin? You can go ahead.
Oh, okay, thanks. I just, I had a few questions, but the first one is just a follow-up on the fully remote question. And it wasn't clear to me if, is the survey, are we planning to offer a fully remote option to parents who need or want it? Or, and the survey is to find out how we most effectively do that? Is the survey to find out whether we would offer a fully remote option to parents that need or want it? And if, if it's the latter, if the survey is to find out whether we would even offer it, can you talk a little bit about what the sort of considerations or criteria would be in deciding whether to offer it?
I'm going to turn that question over to Felicia Starks Turner, who can give like more of the context as to how the survey came to be and like what the survey is.
Oh, thanks, Dr. Kelly. And I may need Ebony to help with this also because the survey came to be from a questions from the building principals regarding trying to get a handle on parents' interest in fully remote options, or if they would send their children to school if we had onsite options. And so that's was kind of the impetus on my end for putting the survey together. Ebony, I think I speak to it more clearly.
Right. I, I think from Gavin, one of the things that we've heard from is being also legal counsel is definitely that districts should be providing a remote only option for students that have like an underlying medical condition. And what we've heard is that it is not required. And it's really up to the district if you want to provide a remote only option for those families that don't feel comfortable with their children coming back to school. So our district has not stated that, you know, that is not something that we're that we would not do for families. And I believe this information will help our building principals as they are determining you know, who the students are that are in, you know, the various cohorts.
So, so just to clarify, to make sure I'm understanding the answer, for people that need it for medical reasons, there will be a fully remote option.
Absolutely.
For people that desire it because they're uncomfortable or have concerns about sending their kids to school. The answer is, I'm not sure if you're saying that that will be up to individual principals or
No. I'm, I'm saying that the district, what we've heard from the attorneys is that districts do not have to opt, offer it. But we, we are planning to offer that for families that don't feel comfortable.
Got it. So we do intend to offer a fully remote option for, for families.
I've not heard anything differently. And I can ask any member of the team if I'm mistaken, but yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. The second question I had was, so you just, I had one about the cohorts list, which you just answered, which is that by the end of July, the hope is to have that out. And then I think you said there was a sequencing around the childcare survey coming, being done after the cohorts list, so people can answer it with better information. Is there a sequence for sort of when we want that survey out and sort of when we'll figure out the childcare piece?
Can you say more in terms of sequence?
Well, it sounds like the survey does, is going to go out at some point after the cohort list. So I'm wondering like, when will the survey go out? When will we be asking for responses? And then what will, what will we do with those responses?
So the responses will, first, the, the survey itself will be developed jointly with our, with our childcare partners. And the responses will really help them to inform their planning. And the thought that we had was that the families having the cohorts would allow them to better identify like what their childcare needs are from the, from the standpoint of partnering with one of, one of the providers.
And then just to follow up on that. So one of the things that I think we'll probably find is that there will be an affordability, there'll be a supply issue. Do we have enough childcare providers for the demand that this is going to create? And then there will be an affordability question for families that are looking at significant increases in childcare because of the blended option. Is part of the survey and conversations that, that are taking place with providers focused on the affordability issue? And is, is there an anticipation that at some point you may come back to the board and ask that the district provide assistance to families that need assistance to make their childcare affordable?
So we will, I know that for many other providers, they have scholarships and things of that nature. So as we have more information, we may come back to the board for our, you know, for families that may need assistance. I am not certain, based on the information that I have, that there will be a supply demand on the providers. I think one of the key barriers might be the facilities of where, you know, where these spots might be offered. But in speaking with the principals, the thought is that by families knowing which cohort their, their children are in, there will be a lot of not backdoor, but backdoor planning as families begin to network with, with one another and forming their, their pods, their communities for the remote learning days that their, their children are on. So not 100% sure that I have a firm handle on what the demand might be for the, the childcare providers, but we definitely wanted to make sure that we are working on that solution for our families and also for our staff.
Thanks. And just the last thing I would say on that is I think one of the concerns with informal arrangements is that the the sort of goal of blended is to ensure that there are health guidelines are being followed and social distancing is happening, which is what would happen in a licensed childcare facility that's subject to all the state regulations.
I understand.
So I would encourage the district to think about how we can, how we can maximize the likelihood that kids that are in two days a week are engaged in, in health, have healthy arrangements the other three days and aren't coming back to the school building after having taken unnecessary risks or risks that we might help them avoid.
I understand. I think we definitely want to partner with our families in that way, but we also recognize that during phase four, that our students are also involved in other, you know, activities as well. So it really applies, you know, across the board. So, but that definitely is a consideration.
Thanks.
Hey, so Dr. Kelly, one of the things that the board did request is, which would be helpful, I think, as we have these conversations, is a project plan where you are listing out kind of core activities dates of completion, because I think there is a sequencing to this that I think is really important. And it would be helpful to not have to kind of remember recordings and, and dates like that. So if we could have that soon, that would be great. And it can obviously be shared with the public and updated in real time. What I, what is the date for when parents are going to know their cohorts?
I don't know the firm date. We can get back to you after we confer with our principals. I can guesstimate just based on some of the work that they would need to do to get that done. Some of the work that they would need to get, to get that done is having conversations with their, with their families. So I don't want to give a date and put that on record without conferring with them first, but it's definitely a top priority for us.
Got it. So yeah, I would, I would love to get some clarity by that. A week if possible, even if, even it's just to say this is the date that it's going to happen. Um, the the surveys. The surveys. Handover research for any of the surveys that we're sending out to the community. I know there was some feedback about survey questions and kind of like trying to make sure that we're capturing the right, we're asking the right questions so that we get the right answers. Are, have they been pulled into any of our survey work? And if not, can we?
They have for some of the subcommittees. I know Carrie Cam is working with them on a tool for social emotional wellness. I know that Amanda in the last tool that we use with families worked with the parent volunteers who are, you know, that's their area of expertise, designing of surveys and market research. But we will definitely continue to use Hanover as we move forward.
For back to school planning specifically, like for these surveys that are going out to parents?
So for back to school planning for social emotional wellness, I, I'm not 100% sure, Carrie, if the surveys are going out to families.
Yes, I just had a conversation with them last week around developing a social emotional, for lack of a better word, needs assessment that would be given to families. And so there, we just had communication with them yesterday around sort of a timeline related to that. And in the weekly updates of the board, I can share what that timeline is.
Okay, that's great. And if, and if we can, I mean, I don't know what our contract says, but I feel like if we could potentially use them to review some of the surveys that we're sending out, it could be very helpful to have their expertise around like survey data and the, and the way to ask questions in order to kind of elicit the responses that, that we want, especially as we know we have a couple more coming out. Would also recommend integrating the childcare providers into the survey for the childcare so that you're asking questions that they, that are, that they would like covered, right? So that we're just kind of bringing all those partners in and getting as many of those questions in the survey as possible. So thank you for that, if you guys could.
Dr. Kelly, can you talk a little bit about if parents decide remote learning or hybrid learning isn't working for them? At what points, if any, they are may, they might be able to move between options? So for example, at the end of first trimester, or are they kind of locking in for the semester or for the school year? And then kind of along that same framework, what would be the, well, it's a slightly different question, but similar for the district. What would be the triggers for us to move into full remote or or do a full return to five days? If you could talk, I know they're kind of slightly different, but if you could talk about kind of the ability to move back and forth between different plans?
I'm not 100% sure that I can firmly answer your first question, but we have talked about looking at either a trimester or semester approach. I, I just, it's hard to say, being like really firm and definite that individual would have to remain in an approach when we see that it's just not working for, for their family. So I don't really have a heart and fast like response to your first question, to be quite honest. The only thing that I could say is that we've had several conversations as a team about that. In terms of the second question, so, I mean, you guys know that I'm from the East Coast and I'm just going to call it, you know, COVID-19, where my understanding is we haven't even gotten out of the first phase yet, of the first wave. So it is highly unlikely, highly unlikely, highly unlikely that we will not see a full remote only at some point. As to when that will take place, I don't have that crystal ball. But I, you know, this for all of us, board, oh, I wish I had a hug like that too. For board members, for community members, staff members, you know, this is not an ideal situation. And I, I really wish that I could sit here and deliver a different response. But I, I do think that we should, as a community, prepare ourselves for, you know, having to make the, the switch to remote at some point.
Yeah, that's definitely fair. And I think our questions were really getting at like the remote learning, which is why we were kind of like, well, let's talk a bit about more about what that would look like. But we also have to plan for the hybrid in the, in the moment. So I think any for both is, is really smart and prudent. There are, there will be parents who, there's a four day for students with IEPs and 504s. But there is a possibility that those parents might say, I don't really want to exercise that option. How are we keeping track of? You know, because all of those numbers, like all of our projections from the last presentation are predicated on full enrollment, right? Here's our capacity at each of the schools. If we have, when are we going to kind of, that's our, that's our full capacity number. What's our like more close to reality? And I think part of that is having those conversations with parents and saying, I know you can go for four days, but are you opting out of that? Like, are we, what's the sequencing of whether we find out people are taking advantage of the four day or even the day, right?
Yeah. So to answer your question, it's shifting a little bit from the district level to the school leader level. That's a part of the complexity of like, you know, for our school principals, where, where they're sitting at right now. So there are a lot of moving parts here and we will be working, they are really fantastic close knit team, but we also have the support of like a faith call and Ebony Lofton, as well as the cabinet team to just make sure that as we're having our weekly conversations, sometimes more than weekly, that they are able to do a lot of that planning. So it's really, as, as we begin to operationalize a plan, it shifts a little bit from like this macro level, the district conversation to like what's happening boots on the ground from a school leader perspective. And it's really incumbent upon us to have that two-way communication with our building leaders on the support that they need or what they're seeing in terms of the development of the cohorts and their class list and things of that nature. So definitely a lot of moving parts with all of our subcommittees, the safety and operations, social emotional, as Carrie gave a little highlights to. And I know a little bit later on the agenda, Rob is going to be sharing out the preliminary budget, which takes a peek at financial impact. And of course, you heard earlier from learning model. So I, I know that many of our principals are probably on the line as well as many of our staff members. And I really count it an honor to serve alongside of these really fantastic leaders and staff members and cabinet team, because it's not, it is not an easy task ahead of us, but we're, we're in this together. And I, and I believe that, you know, if any community can, Oak Park definitely can, can do this.
Hi, Dr. Kelly. Can you talk a little bit about the cohorts and how we anticipate teaching teams and cohorts of students? Do we anticipate that they will move together onsite and in virtual spaces? Do we expect to have a team of remote teachers that will only be handling the remote portions? And then finally, for families that choose or, you know, for, for whichever reason, the remote only option, will that be working alongside with the cohorts that exist, or will they be completely separate? I know there are a lot of districts who are leaning into a model of a totally separate virtual school? Is that what we're thinking of? Or will the kids be participating with their grade level teams who are in class, you know, via live stream or however that would work?
I'm going to turn it over to Ebony. Based on the schedules that I've seen, it appears that the remote students would be participating with the like in-person class. And it sounds like from your question, do you want us to focus a little bit more in our response on like what might be happening at the middle school? Or is your response, or is your question, Catherine, more K A globally?
It's more of a global question. So, you know, will, will the kids be seeing different teachers on their onsite days than they will be in their remote spaces? Or will there be a system that will allow for teachers to be onsite for two days and then teaching remotely the same kids for the other three days?
So my understanding, I'm going to ask Ebony to take the question is that a lot of the content, when students are receiving instruction remotely, is content being delivered by their elective area teachers or their special area teachers? So like their art, their music, their, so yes, those are different teachers than your classroom. Your, your classroom, your, your other subject area content. So Ebony, do you want to take the question?
So yeah, so I think there are probably two different ideas here. So for students who are fully remote, and I think, are you asking if they'll actually kind of patch into their classroom? And I think that would be something that we kind of, at least what we're proposing would be a separate model where they would actually have cohorts and they would deliver our remote learning teaching team would kind of deliver their instruction. But for students who are in onsite and also receive remote learning, so they're in that hybrid model, what we're proposing is that what we're proposing is that there is some classroom community that is built. So the morning meeting might have both students who are that half of the full class instead of having just half the class. But then for the remainder of the day, it would just be those onsite, that onsite cohort. So we're trying to kind of figure out for those who participate in the hybrid model, how to blend and still build that classroom community.
And Ebony, can you just highlight again the, what middle school, it would, it looked differently, the hybrid model at the middle school level versus the K five buildings?
Yeah, so they're still going to deliver core content during those onsite days, and then electives would be delivered on the two remote days. The Wednesdays might look different between the two buildings in terms of how perhaps in elementary building, that might be a time for a second separate, a can you morning meeting, it might look a little different for middle school. So just that Wednesday would probably be something that we'd look at a little differently, just because of the way that the school day looks. But we would still kind of use that same model in terms of onsite and then core content onsite and electives or specials remotely.
Ebony, this is Holly. Can I follow up on that? When you say it would look the same, I have a rising sixth grader, full disclosure, so I don't have experience with the middle school, but my directly, but I understand that the kids move around, even core content, they move between teachers. So are the teachers going to rotate or are the kids going to move?
So the concept that's been forwarded is that students would be co-horted, and we want to keep them as stable as possible. So teachers would move, would be the ones that would move. And that would be kind of a block that we deliver. So you have about four days worth of content delivered in those two days of onsite, just because the way the periods are built out, and then asynchronous probably being delivered on Wednesdays.
Ebony, just to follow up to that, was, has there many, has there been any discussion of doing like more of a block scheduling for those middle school students then, so that they would have like a 90 minute chunk of English on Monday versus two days of English for 45 minutes?
Yeah, they end up being in blocks and chunks over that time.
And all, and from a social, social and, you know, community standpoint, when you go from the elementary schools, obviously, the middle schools are much larger. And if the kids are kind of limited to the classroom, are there, how are we going to make sure these middle schoolers kind of get to know each other and know kids from the other schools? You know, I mean, is that part of, part of how we're going to handle remote days? I mean, is there anything, it seems a little restrictive to just have them with their class kids? But I, I mean, I get it, safety first, but just is there going to be options for the kids to kind of expand their circles beyond their classroom that the teachers are going to come to them for?
Yeah, I think as the middle school principals kind of build out schedules, I think that they're considering kind of all angles. But, you know, just fully transparent, we want to make sure that we're considering safety first. So I think that kind of more to come as they kind of finish kind of designing their schedules. But just wanted to kind of at least land on the main concept for scheduling that we're moving forward.
Ebony, I just wanted to add something on to that really quick, kind of along with that. We do have a culture climate team at each middle school that's really tasked with kind of the helping to alongside the principals and assistant principals and culture climate coach to really set the vision for culture, climate, community building, school wide. And I, that is, that is a topic that they will be considering.
Perfect.
And well, the, so because the specials at the middle school look so different and kids are usually choosing, you know, essentially one elective, and then they have P E. Are, are we saying that those are kind of the only things that they will be doing?
Yes, so there's still a wide option. So it could be in a range of, so we're still kind of building in kind of what that could look like. But just really kind of honing in again on that, the, those four core content areas and then everything else that would kind of make up their day, really kind of looking at that on those remote days. But it will necessarily kind of be a wider range of opportunities that they get on those days.
I have a question about the students with IEPs and 504s. So one of the concerns I'd seen is kind of twofold. One is whether they're going to be grouped with other neurotypical kids. And so the whole issue of L R E, so least restrictive environment, or if they're to be clumped into the kind of their own cohorts, which becomes more of a self-contained classroom. So the, the fear for some parents is that if they're going to school for four days, they're getting exposed to twice as many kids. So I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about how those kids will be co-horted or classed? And then along with that, if they're going four days, and this, and this is riffing off the question I was asking earlier, that there's this fear that they're going to repeat content. So if it's two core content area classes on Mondays and for cohort A and cohort B, if they're going to end up repeating content, or if that would be where they would, if they get intervention services, maybe the, the non, that what would be their not, what would be their remote days or more their intervention days? So I don't know if you can talk a little bit about kind of how those students will be grouped and then what their schedules might look like or what, yeah.
So we're still legally obligated to follow the IEP. So we can't create a new self-contained classroom if that's not the program that's actually delivered in the IEP. So if the IEP dictates that students are just spending most of their time, and most of our IEPs do in the general education classroom, then that will be the model that we'll follow. And then, like, as I spoke with Donna today, so we're kind of looking at kind of different options, because we obviously still want students to have access to specials. What does that look like? Because we also need to make sure that we're providing special education services per their IEP. So we're still, again, kind of working out what those remote days would look like. Should parents choose that as an option? But we will have more on that to come in terms of what the, the choices they would have to make and what that day would look like. And then they would be able to kind of make a decision for their families from there.
Nice question. So I know there's a lot of information that we don't know, we're still trying to figure it out, and I get that. I'm just wondering, is there a timeline about, I think Kisa kind of spoke to this already, but is there a timeline by the end of July, either like, what are their priorities? And what would we know by August 1st? I just want to kind of get a better understanding of like, what the priorities are and what, what we're working towards. Like, will we have the survey done by August 1st? Will we have the cohorts by August 1st? Will we be able to meet with those childcare providers by August 1st? So if you can, Dr. Kelly, kind of speak to what the priorities are that we can have done in the next.
I can't, I don't want to commit to something without confirming consulting with my, I'm sorry for the back. I can't figure out how to stop the pings. If you're hearing, that's from my computer and not from my cell phone. So I will get that information to the board via the project plan that Kisa said earlier. But again, the planning that we are doing is contingent upon the, the, you know, the, the COVID-19 metrics. I, I will say off, off the top of my head, and I just can't commit to a dietary. If I were the person doing the work, I could, but I need to consult with other, other individuals is getting the, the cult, the, the students that are in the cohorts, getting that work done. That's the utmost priority and communicating that to the families. That is work that's taking place by our building principals. The other thing that I know that's a huge priority is just continuing the conversation around childcare. Huge priority for us is around like having conversations with, with our staff. So we have, or are planning to have a series of Q and A sessions to answer questions. So there's a whole host of things. I think it probably would be best if we worked on that project plan. We did begin to develop it today. It's just that it's not really ready to share with the board, especially if it's as well sharing it out with the full, full community. So we want to work on that. But I, I just, again, want to reiterate that everyone here is working full capacity on all of these options. So I don't want anyone to feel that, you know, that it's just a board meeting on July 9th, and then, you know, three days later, another board meeting. And this is like the only work that we're doing, what we're reporting out. So there are a lot of things that are happening behind, behind the scenes.
Yeah, I was invited to sit in on some of the planning. So there's definitely a lot. And Catherine and Holly are sitting on the back to school committee. So we definitely know that there's work being done and just trying to get some clarity around those things is kind of what we're, what we're doing here. The, we've heard feedback about the desire to have the most, the youngest of our students, the most vulnerable of our students. We've actually had some people volunteering to give up their seats so that, you know, younger kids can participate in, in more time and in more frequency. What is the role of space going to make possible for us? There have been lots of conversations about using other spaces in the community. We, the, the models that we received last week were predicated on, this is what's happening at this particular school. Are there opportunities outside of the school, outside of the school environment for, for us to use? And if that is a possibility, what from an admin, from the administration's perspective, what does more space give us? Is it childcare? Is it the opportunity to have K to two be prioritized for maybe more, you know, I'm trying to understand kind of how you guys are thinking about the possibility of more space options for back to fall?
I'm going to turn the floor over to Jeannie Keen, who's been looking into the space issue. I think for us, our goal, again, to create a, a safe environment for, for our, for our staff and students is reducing the, the density in our buildings. But Jeannie, if you could speak to what you are learning in your investigations for facilities?
In regards to the facilities, we are taking the approach, obviously, to have the density and follow the, the guidelines of the six feet. So there are certain schools that we could possibly maybe do a wing in, but then we would have to reduce the amount of students that we are allowing in the cohorts. So until I know the cohorts, which we, I know the principals have been working on, that's kind of hard to answer currently. But it depends on what option that we really want to do.
Yeah, and this is more, and Jeannie, thank you so much. I know, you know, you know, these, the grounds and the buildings, like the back of your hand. I think this is more philosophical question and less about kind of pinning you guys down on an actual like number. It's just kind of like, if there is more space, if we're looking at additional space, is, are we, what are, what is our thinking around, will we get more space? What, what, what would you guys ideally like to, to do with that additional space? Is it just reducing density and moving kids to other spaces in the community? What, what are your thoughts around what's possible if there is more space other than the actual physical schools that we have?
Well, our first goal is to house the students and the staff safely. Any extra space then, we are working through, we need isolation spaces in case any of the children do come down. So we're using some of the extra space for that. The other portion will be, if we can possibly have daycare for those children that are in those cohorts, then we will have that in the extra space. That's currently where we sit with the facility usage right now.
That's helpful. And as that, and as that conversation evolves, it would be great to understand what is possible. Obviously, all of these questions are with the foundation that where we want to be safe. We all agree to that. So assuming that we're using those guidelines, what are some things, new learnings that you guys are getting or new opportunities that you see if space becomes available, available to us through other, other partners in the community? Thank you.
Well, we've been talking to the libraries, we've been talking to, you know, Park District, to Hepsaba, to O P F. And the realistic matter is this, is there's not a lot of space. We're very dense as it is, even the Park District. Everyone's able to only house so much, and all of us are trying to reach out to the same places for extra space. So it also depends on, like the one public comment said, are we going to be childcare, which has to be licensed and have certain things which Hepsaba can have? So they would probably get the space prior to us or utilize the space for any Park District programs and whatnot. But in order to do straight daycare, you'd have to have certain recommendations and regulations that we just don't have.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I wasn't, I wasn't advocating one point or another. I was just trying to understand kind of the conversations that have been had, but I think you've given me.
Oh, those have just started, so it's kind of hard to answer that question. We're still trying to figure out with all of our partners what those spaces are.
And what those needs are, right? Because we're entering these conversations with folks like Hepsaba and stuff like that. Okay. Thank you, Jeannie, as always.
And I think too, Kisa, the, if we had the space, even if in other, you know, areas, you would, you know, I think a part of the, the barrier that we were talking about previously was also around like the additional staff staffing needs. The, the supplies not quite as, I mean, obviously, we would need like additional supplies to open up those classrooms, but it was primarily the additional staffing needs for those additional spaces. So, and I, the second piece is not necessarily wanting to add to the density in that buildings or in the buildings. So.
I understand, which is why I was talking about outside of the buildings. Yeah, but I hear what you're saying, that, that, that there are cost considerations as well.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
It is almost 8:30, and I want to be mindful of time. Did anyone want to ask one last follow up question, or should we move on?
I didn't have, oh, go ahead.
This is Gavin. I had one more question. I'm, I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about assessment in the new school year. I know this is very unprecedented. We're going to be trying out learning models that we haven't tried before. There's also the issue of measuring learning loss that may have happened in the spring. And I, it would be helpful to hear a bit about what kind of assessment framework you guys are thinking of for figuring out how these learning models are working and making course corrections where we need to and those kinds of things.
So Gavin, is your question around the state assessment or district assessment, like what our plans are?
Yes, what your plans are.
All right. Ebony or Michael, I think that there were some highlights of that from the ninth. But if there are any other updates, if you could share?
Yeah, so the common assessment team actually took a look at N W A's proposed kind of virtual options. And I think they've kind of decided, first of all, kind of with the speed of assessments that we already have, how we're going to actually kind of make sure that we administer those. But then I think in our last presentation, we outlined some common assessments that are standard space. So we want to make sure that we're able to get kind of frequent and diagnostic checks around how students are performing. So first, as they enter, where are their skill levels aligned to standards? But then also kind of, well, how long is it taking for kids to kind of, if there is loss, make that up? So doing some progress monitoring over time with, with our existing systems, but also with the common assessments that we forwarded. So E S D I affirm and actually connect for the middle school. So, and then we'll have, obviously, we'll kind of share out what our pacing will be around that. But it will be something that we look for as soon as students kind of come back and return and get settled that kind of in this new reality, we want to make sure that we're also understanding how students are performing and how they master those critical standards that we've been kind of supporting all summer and last spring.
And can I just quickly follow up on that? So as part of that, Ebony, and thanks, that's very helpful. Will that put us in a position to look at, like, you guys are obviously working through a number of different ways this could look and different options for doing this. Will those assessment frameworks put us in a position to say, we tried this, it's working great? You know, we're keeping up this particular model, or we tried this other kind of arrangement, didn't get the results that we desired. So we're now sort of looking at some of the other options that we didn't choose originally? Or like, how does the sort of learning model assessment piece look?
So if you're talking about kind of assessing how students are doing across the hybrid, I think we'll be able to give you some good information around, here's our hybrid model. We've also kind of developed accelerated scope to make sure that we're still capturing those standards that we didn't deem critical back in the, the spring. So we can give you some good information about how students are performing. I don't know that we could use that in terms of decision making to move from any space to another, but we can use that to kind of show progress across how students are performing in that model.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I know there's still a lot of questions out there as things bubble up. So we'll be looking forward for the administration to share out the frequently asked questions and kind of continuing with the updates. So appreciate all of the hard work all of you have been doing. I know this is very difficult. And it is interesting to see that even some districts haven't announced their plans. So it's, I think it's good to say something that we are trying to at least be ahead of what to anticipate. So as, and even though I know we can't answer all the questions, you know, we do have a little more ahead than some other districts. I do appreciate all the work you guys are doing.